Good afternoon, welcome to the Norwich area museums committee. Just waiting for the nod from Naomi. We are streaming live now and welcome all members to the Norwich area museums committee. This is the first meeting of the civic year and so the first job that we need to do is to receive nominations for the appointment of Chair. Councilor Max Hall. Thank you, your microphone is not working but I think it's nominated councillor James.
Yes.
Jackie Humbley.
I didn't request it.
And has, is that seconded, please? I seconded that nomination. Councillor Everett, thank you very much. So it's me who's seconded with no other nominations. Could I, could I, we just move to the vote for members, please? Thank you very much. Okay, so councillor Humbley is duly elected as Chair and I will pass over to him for the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jackie, for that. So welcome everybody and we move next to the appointment of the Vice Chair. I'd like to nominate councillor Roger Colton for the position of Vice Chair. And could I invite somebody to second? Right, thank you very much. And we'll move to the votes on that list. Names, so. Great, thank you very much. And that's councillor Roger Colton, duly elected as Vice Chair. Okay, so before we move to any apologies, I'd just like to welcome everybody to this committee meeting. It's really great to be able to say that to everybody in the group, well, on screen. I'd like to welcome councillors Everett, Birmingham and Riley, renewed to this committee. I'd also like to welcome councillor Calvert, an ex-officiatory member. And also to welcome back councillor Graham, who sat on this committee floor. And also we have Denise, who's here for NCS. Okay, there are no apologies, so if I could ask, do we have any public questions?
Chair, if I receive any apologies after the meeting, I'll obviously call those in a minute. And we have no public questions, Chair.
Thank you very much. We'll move to point five, are there any declarations of interest? No, in which case, could we look back, apologies for having to pass or cast on my mind's back so far, but if people who were present at the meeting on the 2nd March would be able to, for that meeting? Thank you very much. In which case, we now move to our next item, item seven. I'm delighted to welcome Frances Makin and Charles King Newland, who will be, who are former Friends of Norwich Museum. It's their centenary year in 2021, so delighted to hand over to Frances and Charles, who will be making a presentation on the Friends of Norwich Museum for us. So, over to you.
Thank you, Mr Chair and councillors. I'd like to thank you all very much for giving me as Chairman of the Friends Museum an opportunity alongside Frances Makin, who was one of my predecessors as Chairman, an opportunity for us to give a presentation of the first hundred years of Friends of Norwich Museums. I took over as Chairman just before the pandemic in February. So it's rather exciting, next week, the council will be meeting face to face for the first time.
Good afternoon, it's really very nice to be here with you today. And thank you for inviting us, councillor Humbley.
I'd like to begin by giving you a brief synopsis of Friends, after which Frances and I will elaborate further. In 1920, John Henry Walter of Drake Hall was so distressed to realise that works of art of national and local importance would be lost to the people of Norwich and Norfolk, and thereby to future generations, because the city had no funds with which to purchase them, that he decided to act. Twenty years earlier, the old castle jail had been renovated into the Castle Museum. And as he was the last surviving committee member of the old Norfolk and Norwich Museum, John Walter was acutely aware of the importance of museums. Although he was by Beni's mid-seventies, he responded with energy and enthusiasm by founding a support group on 31st December 1920, subsequently called Friends of Norwich Museums. As a result of the founding of the Friends, two magnificent gifts were given by individual Friends to the city in 1922. A solicitor, Leonard Bollywood, who rescued Strangers Hall through dilapidation, gave the hall and a major portion of its contents to the city as England's first museum of rural life. This was followed in 1925 with the Bridehall being gifted by shoe manufacturer Sir Henry Holmes, who equipped it to be an industrial museum to illustrate the rich industrial heritage of the city and county. And those inaugural gifts are still on display today. John Henry Walter enlisted many other notable personal acquaintances to be Friends, such as Herbert William Gerald and Edward Baldwin. And it gives me pleasure to tell you that relatives of most of those families still enjoy connection to the Friends. Those funding wealthy Friends interjectors are still being followed to this day, as the FNM continues to raise funds to help purchase objects and artefacts to enhance the collections of the three museums, thereby cementing not only their close association with the museums, but all who work within them, as well as adding extra support with their own volunteer group.
John Henry Walter was a director of Norwich Union Funds. He travelled widely and was a keen collector of Nelsonia. He was the last surviving committee member of the old Norfolk and Norwich Museum, which had been founded in 1825 by antiquarians and members of the gentry as a private repository for their collecting passions. As a local man with influential connections, Walter quickly enrolled twenty-five members of two Guineas and one Guinea each from amongst his personal friends, who included members of aristocracy, gentry, local businesses, antiquarians and politicians. With a grant in aid from the Board of Education and generous donations through well wishes, Walter totalled for the first year to £151.08. And with this sum, two purchases were made. A Tudor door for £100, which is now based at Strangers Hall Museum, and an 18th century jug by William Absalom of Yarmouth for £12. That left a healthy balance of £39.08. As already stated, during the following three years, Strangers Hall and Bridehall were gifted to the city.
In 1910, a protest group led by the architect Edward Baldwin, assisted by James Gagner, the editor of Past and Letters, had rescued St Peter Humblegate from dilapidation. By 1921, with both men being Friends, they were able to be assisted in its restoration and repair by money allocated specifically for the purpose of our Friends. Roof was repaired, the dangerous tower demolished and the important medieval glass reset. In 1933, the city took over St Peter Humblegate and opened the Museum of Church Art, the first adult agro church ever to be turned into secular use. With the acquisition of each of four museums, Friends formulated deliberate, continued collecting items relevant to their individual characteristics. Collections which are being transferred from the old Norfolk and Norwich Museum to the city and the opening of the Castle Museum in 1894 had a strong representation in archaeology, geology, natural history, ethnography or curiosities. So the Friends decided to opt mate extended collections by including items either poorly or not previously represented, such as English porcelain, furniture textiles, paintings, clay arts, Norwich school paintings and Norwich silver, all of which was guided initially by the specialist knowledge of individual members of the Friends, who advised on purchases and queued their outstanding collections to the museums. This day was superbly laid by John Henry Walter and his wife. In 1928, the policy approved to augment the museum's collection of Lurstov porcelain, resulting in the castle acquiring a gift of purchase, a unparalleled collection of rare and unusual Lurstov pieces. Having succeeded John Henry Walter's treasure, Colonel Bulwer consulted a keen collector of Lurstov porcelain with extensive knowledge of English porcelain, wisely guided all the castle's purses. Upon his death, his personal collection of over six hundred English teapots was given to the castle, which has subsequently been augmented by the Miller Teapot Collection. Those two outstanding and unique collections have put the Castle Museum on the international map, as it is generally acknowledged to be the largest teapot collection in the world.
At this juncture, it is interesting to note that in 1926, John Henry Walter's modest wish to accrue £100 annually from subscriptions was granted. Today, that would be worth £1,455. In itself, that was a coup, as the year's annual report highlighted the continuing difficulty purchasing items in the face of strong competition from wealthy private collectors. Therefore, upon his death in 1927, the Friends staged a special exhibition of his extensive personal treasures to act as a spur in the hope that other collectors would look favourably upon the Friends with their collections. Due in part to that exhibition and the increased interest in the Friends, it is heartening to note that by 1929, Friends' numbers had increased to 150.
Despite the economic depression in 1930, Colonel Bulwer described the Friends' position as buoyant. 1930 also saw the Friends increase their role within the museums from a purely funky body to an active group which organised exhibitions, the first of which at the Stuart Hall was of English needlework of all periods. Those exhibits had indeed been provided by residents of the city and county. The quantity and quality of those exhibits were universally described as remarkable. Also that year, the Friends went on outings to country homes organised by the National Arts Collection Fund. The items grew so popular that it prompted the Friends to institute their own annual items to properties owned by Museum Francis Porter's. Throughout the 1930s, the Friends enlisted Holcombe, Huycombe, Ravelham, Manchester and Wilterton, Hudsonport, Langley Park and smaller houses in private areas. During these years, the Friends were also invited to Crown Point by Mr and Mrs Russell Coleman, where they viewed an unrivaled collection of Norwich school paintings, Lurstov porcelain, Yarmouth glass and rare books.
The 1930s to the 1950s were periods of growth for the Friends and the museums' benefit, receiving numerous large requests from individuals, which enabled the museums to purchase the very best in fine and decorative art, thereby augmenting its collection of Norwich school paintings and enabling purchases of furniture and textiles for Strangers Hall. By the end of the decade, Norwich Museums had received a much larger grant in aid of purchase than any other municipal museum in the kingdom, thus enabling the small purchasing committee comprising the Friends' treasure and the museum's curator to act quickly and with confidence when desirable items appeared in sale room catalogues. The Board of Education noting that Strangers Hall was deplorably lacking good William and Mary Walnut furniture and Queen Anne furniture, gave the Friends a grant of £39.15 to make suitable purchases. Over the next year, the Friends acquired, purchased or were gifted monies to augment the Strangers Hall collection and to acquire four important pieces of furniture for the Georgian dining room. From that time on, when gaps in the museum collections were identified, Friends were asked to keep a lookout for suitable items. Indeed, some items of required furniture appear on the gift and purchase lists for up to twenty years after the first request was made, thereby testifying to the tenacity of the Friends in tracking down the right pieces to take their place alongside other well-known and loved Strangers Hall furnishings. In recognition of their increasing responsibilities to all four museums, the Friends changed their name from the Friends of the Castle Museum to their present name, Friends of Norwich Museums.
Before the office of President was instituted in the 1960s, it was customary for the Lord Mayor to take the chair of the Friends AGM. In 1932, this fell to Sir Henry Holmes, who announced a major purchase that year, 106 drawings by John Selkoppel, which had been acquired for £600, contributed jointly by the Friends and the National Art Collections Fund. This illustrates an early funding partnership which continues to this day, as these partnerships are vital, especially in the acquisition of fine art, where the asking price of the marketplace is for the most part too great for a single organisation to bear. 1944, the Treasury reported the government had given large sums of money to enable provincial museums and important manufacturing centres to augment their collections. And although no longer a major manufacturing centre, Norwich received £18 under this scheme, which the Friends regarded as an encouraging gesture. During this time, the Friends continued to give and donate their collections to the museums with the Natural History Department receiving large gifts from the Gurney and Buckley families of miteed daughter, birds, European butterflies, bird's eggs, flint instruments, forest dead fossils or moths. Those wonderful gifts were swiftly followed with the quest from the Reverend Rogers to six thousand bird's eggs. Strangers Hall received some fine collections of Norwich shawls and items related to the Royal Northern Regiment were also collected to the museums. Although the regimental museum, the last of our group, did not come under the administration of the museum service until its move to the Shire Hall in 1988.
From the 1930s till the mid 40s, the Friends worked closely with the museum staff, undertaking many of the tasks that have been assumed by museum professionals today. Money raised by the Friends went to construct the Norfolk Room to present paintings of varying Norfolk landscapes. As a result of the construction of the Norfolk Room, the Friends raised money to redisplay the Archaeology Gallery. Friends' requests continued with more Norwich school pictures and the Caldwell collection of 131 custard maps, as well as those Lurstov porcelain from the Taylor brothers in memory of their sister. In 1938, the first donation boxes were placed in St Peter Humble. The first year's proceeds were received by the Friends and with which they purchased a 17th century organ and an Afghan carpet for the church. The war years were quite low on purposes, apart from Norwich silver. Though there were notable gifts from the individual Friends whose purchases of knife silver depleted funds to such an extent that an appeal had to be launched among the Friends when another unmissable piece came on the market. From 1939 to 1945, Friends were given the option of leaving their subscriptions in a bonus, but thankfully, none resigned to their membership. During those years, the annual report was suspended only paper nationally, but despite all difficulties and petrol rationing, the AGMs were still in an annual affair and thankfully, gifts of all kinds continued to flood in.
1944, the money from the donation boxes in the castle of Strangers Hall had a combined total of £13, which was less than a third collected over the same period as St Peter Humble. It seemed that people were more inclined to be generous when visiting a church. That being the case, the Friends combined those donations with the residue of the Norfolk Room fund to provide new facilities at the Bridehall. In 1945, the Friends received one of their largest donations, which was gifted to the castle by Mr and Mrs Russell Coleman of their vast collection of Norwich school wall cards, together with money to construct a gallery to house it. Also in 1945, Miss Toews queued her best pieces of furniture for the establishment of Walnut Room at Strangers Hall. With funds depleted at the end of the war, Friends began to recruit drive with a target of 300 members and made permission to publication of postcards and guides to the collectors to sell the aid funds. During the war years, the new policy of showing loan exhibitions has been very successful, so much so that the museum visitors in 1943 numbered 192,603, of which 30,000 went equal loan. With the war over and the increasing immobile population, Norwich Museums saw visitors come from all over the country to see such exhibitions. One such exhibition, designed by a friend who was billed as Stuart, and financed by the Friends' English portraits and landscape art, was an outstanding success.
With the post-war sale of contents of local country houses, the Friends, aided by generous individual Friends, had the opportunity to purchase selected pieces. Furniture from Hayden Hall was bought and installed in Strangers Hall. Friends also continued to donate catalogues and purchase antiquarian and reference books for the castle library. Also at that time, the Castle Museum made newspaper headlines nationally with the discovery of the Netishu treasure at Kenhill. Realising the significance of the find, the then curator persuaded the owner of the land, Sir Stephen Mase Green, to have it lodged at the castle until the British Museum claimed it. In 1992, a large proportion of the finest pieces were transferred briefly to the castle for an exhibition. The Friends' volunteers were trained as guides to that popular exhibition. In 1953, the museums committee set up a working party to examine the position of museums at the halfway point in the 20th century and invited presentation from the Friends. The committee's remit was to draw up a scheme of forward planning for the city's museums that resulted in a rolling programme of modernisation and redecoration of the Bridehall and Strangers Hall, whilst the castle received the dioramas on the history of man, which was partially funded by the Friends. By now, the quality and standing in the city museums was a matter of great pride. And addressing the Friends, the Lord Mayor at the day declared that Strangers Hall and Bridehall are so good that in other cities, they would not be thought unworthy to be the principal museums. This happy state of affairs was helped to some extent by the Board of Education, which in 1954 allocated a staggering 10% of its entire nationwide museums budget to the Norwich Museums, enabling the collections to enlarge to a marked extent. Also that year, a survey was undertaken by the Arts Council of Great Britain of the FNM's membership, which showed that with a membership total of 402, only Birmingham and Glasgow had a greater number of Friends.
Museums realised that the policy of constantly changing exhibitions brought in the visiting public and each Friend was kept informed by being given a complimentary copy of the museum committee reports. All the gifts and purchases the Friends had made residulously catalogue, from the smallest beetle found at Kitchen St, the 171 Angel Road, November 1954, to the most expensive work of art. Funding continued, augmented by generous supporters such as Agnes Auctione or Agnes Deers in London, who donated the profits from a loan exhibition of chrome copper paintings at their Bonstud Galleries. Then towards the end of the 1950s, a much larger purchasing committee was formed, consisting of museum staff and Friends. Also at that time, the most expensive purchase the Friends had made today was the Morley Anglo-Saxon coin board for £1,500. Of course, since that time, that sum has been exceeded many times over and in fact, it would now be considered very modest indeed. Sir Edmund Baker was our first president in 1954. Thanks to his good offices, a managed to be listed to Queen Mother, consented to become our first patron in 1960. Ten years later, as a result of public appeal, a generous donation from our royal patron helped secure John Crowe's new mills, many were waiting. 1962 was another important year for Friends. The Will Benningham Foundation offered Norwich £750, providing the funds could be matched for the purchase of 20th century works of art. City councils declined it and as the Contemporary Arts Society had no available funds, Friends stepped in to secure the finance, thereby purchasing a landscape study by Walter Sigurd and a portrait by Graham John. This gesture by the Friends encouraged the castle to formulate a new policy, declaring 20th century works of art to recognise importance. Due in part to that, the Friends were now given unlimited free access to Norwich museums as part of their membership, although adventure cards approved by identity were not issued until 1968.
From 1960 to the end of the 20th century, the Friends continued to contribute and support the museums from instituting an annual grant towards the conservation of pictures and the civic collection, to implementing the James Wilson Wig Arts Travel Vessel, formed and financed anonymously on James' death by a close cousin and friend. Due to visitors having an irresistible urge to throw money down the castle well, Friends realised that they had found a unique type of donation box and so had a nylon net fixed at the bottom to catch the monies, which were regularly collected and cleaned by a wonderful volunteer group of Friends. Also at this time, with help from the Friends, the Lurstov porcelain catalogue was at last completed and published. Then in 1974, the Norfolk Joint Museums Committee was formed as local authority museums were absorbed into one group. The Friends were represented on that committee by David Morrison. In early 1960, David was elected as our honorary secretary and during this time in office, he found the British Association of Friends of Museums as an annual gathering of museum Friends secretaries to exchange ideas. Over the years, that group grew to become a large autonomous organisation with nationwide events open to any museum Friend. The first conference in 1975 was held in Mount and the city gave an information kiosk on Hay Hill, free of charge for one week to promote the work of the Friends. During National Museum Week that year, the Friends instigated a rotor of volunteers to start the information table at the castle. It was such a success that it became a permanent fixture. That successful scheme made our group a model of its time and the FNM were asked to speak at the Senoma, the National Gallery, on practical help the volunteer worker in a museum. Our volunteer group flourished and at the behest of Batten, a booklet on the use of volunteers in museums was produced and as far as I'm aware, it is still available at Batten meetings today. As the FNM chairman, David's name was well known within the museum world, so much so that he was invited to give a paper on Batten to an exploratory international conference in Madrid. Due to that, David was asked to be the UK member of a small working party to draw up resolutions which would lead to the foundation of the world of a world federation. Every six months, they met in Europe, European cities, and the founding occurred in Brussels in 1975. He was duly elected president and immediately resolved that only national association of Friends could become full members of the new world federation. In 2011, the International Federation recognised our outstanding contribution to their founding president and in recognition of president, and in recognition of all that he had achieved, the FNM unanimously elected him our vice president. In 2014, we instigated the David Morrison Award in his memory.
From the 1980s to the day, the Friends have continued to fund added expenses such as the lift in the castle, grants towards the conservation department's X-ray machine, and funded the Please Touch exhibition for the blind and harshly sighted, to name a few. Due to the diligence and persistence of the Friends, Strangers Hall reopened in the mid 2000s with the Friends funding two of the four fifty days from late May to early September, with our volunteers assisting the museum service from room monitoring to cleaning as well as providing a special garden group. The Friends also gave twenty-five thousand towards the Bride World's transformation into the Museum of Norwich, and from the outset, we supported and gave thirty-five thousand to the NMS key project application, the Heritage Lot Fund. We were delighted when our application was granted, and are greatly looking forward to its opening next year. With our funding contribution, Samson has saved, and now proudly stands the Museum of Norwich, and more recently, we funded the splendid pack of Pietra Duro tabletop. And last, but by no means least, we are immensely proud to be the lead sponsors of the John Crowe bicentennial exhibition, Nissan Centennial Year, which finished on Sunday. Upon the death of our first royal patron, Lord Chumby consented to be our patron, on the understanding that he wished to be an active patron. On that position, the Friends did not have a better chance. Friends have also been honoured as successive Lord Lieutenant, from Sir Edmund Baker to Lady Dan to Dan, have consented to be our presidents. And like our founder, I am fortunate to share a collection of experienced and talented people who like me care passionately about our museums. A hundred years on from John Henry Walters' founding, Friends continue to carry out its aims, to educate the public by promotion, support, assistance, and improvement of the Norwich museums, to further generate charitable purposes of museums, develop facilities accordingly by, to support the museums by purchase of gifts, exhibits, and the improvement of their display, engage in support and co-ordinating research, publishing, education, and other work for the furtherance of environmental politics.
The centenary of the founding of the first Norfolk Norwich museum in 1825 was celebrated in style, and in 1925, the city held a planned civic reception at the Castle Key for the Friends, where distinguished guests included the Duke of York and the directors of the Louvre and the V and A. In recognition of all that the Friends have contributed to the city museums, we are very honoured to have been granted a civic reception during our centenary year. I truly believe that the Friends of Norwich museums have, in their unique way, contributed to the life and wellbeing of the citizens of Norwich and the county. Due to the philanthropic gifts of Strangers Hall and the Bride World by two of our Friends, the name has changed from museum to museums, and then three years ago, Beckham credited the Friends as being the oldest independent group of Friends of Museums in the country. It is an accolade that Friends of Norwich museums wear to the immense pride. In closing, may I reiterate our chairman's opening words? Thank you for inviting us here this afternoon, and I hope we have given you an insight into the centenary work in life of the Friends of Norwich museums.
Thank you, Francesca. Mr. Chairman, thank you all of you for listening to what I hope wasn't too long a presentation. Have you got any questions? Stand in silence. Oh, council.
Yeah, just wanted to ask, I live at 159 Angel Road, 17, you were saying something at 171 Angel Road?
Yes, maybe you have a, or was there something in that kitchen?
Oh, okay, okay, I know the way you live there, I'll tell them when I see it.
Any other points? Well, that being said, thank you again, Poirot, Beret, and Joyd, telling a little bit about us, thank you.
Well, Francesca, Charles, thank you very much, this is such an interesting presentation. I really want to express our gratitudes to the Friends, that the significant and sustained role that they've played in the cultural life of this city. So thank you for letting us hear your first hundred years this afternoon. You're more than welcome to stay with the rest of the meeting if you wish to. Jackie will be able to, where Francesca and Charles can sit for that. Thank you very much for that. We now move on to item eight for today, which is the Norwich Museum's report, June to August. So I'll hand over to Robin, who will be taking us through this. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you, Chair. And if I can just reiterate those words of thanks to the Friends of the Norwich Museums on behalf of the work for Norfolk Museum Service. It's been a very longstanding and very important relationship, and we look forward to that continuing for another century. But just to put on record, I'll admit thanks to the Friends for whatever they do on behalf of the Norfolk Museum Service, and as Francesca said, the people of Norwich and the people of the county. The report you have in front of you, members, relates to the period, June to August 2021, and a previous report covering the period, February to March 2021, had been circulated in June at the time of the postponement of the June meeting. So I think that report covering the earlier period, February to March, is available on the City Council website. But the report we're looking at today, covering the period June to August, and as normal, Chair, what I will do is run through each section and pause for any questions or comments, and I will just sort of highlight a few items for members' attention. Just beginning on section one, obviously, in common with many organisations, over the last seventeen months, we have been wrestling with the impact of the coronavirus pandemic, and we have seen multiple closures and reopenings of sites across Norfolk Museum Service, and detailed in section 1.1 is the history of the openings and closures that we've worked our way through. But I'm delighted to report this afternoon, in terms of Norfolk Museum Service, we currently have nine of our ten museums open again. We're not operating to our sort of normal opening patterns, a number of sites are coming up because of having to increase staffing levels and manage our resources accordingly. But it's been absolutely fantastic that we've not only been able to open our larger sites like the castle, Russell, and Time to Time, but also over the last few months, reopened a number of our smaller sites, including Museum of Norwich and Strangers Hall, as I'm sure you appreciate, a number of our museum sites are complex historic buildings, and reopening them in a manner that's compliant with the changing world of COVID restrictions has been challenging, to say the least. So it's been really pleasing that we have been able to reopen the sites, and it's fantastic to see visitors once again enjoying our museums. And just to remind members that all legal restrictions relating to museums were lifted on the nineteenth of July 2021 under the government's step four. Despite that, as detailed again in section 1.2, as you would expect, we are continuing to manage our sites very carefully, and that includes recommending that visitors continue to wear face coverings, abide by what we're termed respectful distancing, sorry, and also to check into venues using the NHS app or a pay pro alternative. And I think it's pleasing to see that most of our visitors are following those recommendations. We've also been able to increase site capacity limits, and members may recall that previously we were looking at a maximum capacity of about thirty percent because of the COVID restrictions. We have been able to lift those numbers, although with some sites such as Norwich Castle, we have other limiting factors, in that case, see ongoing construction works. We're still recommending that most of our visitors pre-book where they can, and that has been working very successfully, and the majority of our visitors are still using the ArtKit website to pre-book their visit. But we are also seeing good numbers of walk-in visitors, and we're obviously accommodating those wherever capacity allows. It's also been super to see schools' delivery resume. We saw a very busy summer term actually, with schools wanting to come back to us despite all the restrictions they're operating under. It was extraordinary how determined schools were to recommence their visits, and we did everything we could to facilitate that happening in a safe way. So we saw good numbers of schools visiting our sites over the summer term, and we've got very healthy evidence of bookings over the autumn term, and my colleague Helen Lamon, learning manager for Norwich Museums, will be providing members with an update a little later in this report. And moving on to item 1.5, throughout the pandemic, staff have been working in different ways. I'm sure members are very aware of the vast output of digital resources that staff have been producing, and certainly when our sites were closed to the public, those digital resources were a crucial way of us continuing to engage with our existing audiences, but also to reach out to people who perhaps previously haven't engaged with museums. And we've seen staff working in a broad range of different ways over the last eighteen months, and what we've shared with you this afternoon is a new document that's literally hot off the press, it was then issued last night, which is a bit of fun really, but it's sort of articulating a number of sort of headlines, if you like, from the last year. This infographic is going to be a feature of our annual review, but I thought I would share it with members this afternoon, because it's quite interesting, there's a fun snapshot of some of the innovative ways in which staff have been working during what has been a very challenging period, and I would pay absolute credit to our staff in terms of the creativity they've applied to find new ways of engaging with both existing and new audiences, so to just that of a leisure, but that's quite a telling, I think, summary of some of the work that's been going on across the services. And just to reassure members that all of our work over the last eighteen months in terms of our COVID procedures has been very carefully managed, we've worked, as you would expect, very closely with our colleagues at the County Council's Health, Safety and Wellbeing Team, also been taking advice from sector leaders such as the National Museum Directors Council and the Initiative Museums Network, to ensure that we're always following best practice in terms of how we facilitate visitors coming back into our sites. At that stage, Chair, would I like to pass over to Stuart Garnett to talk about the way in which we've managed meetings in Norwich museums.
Thank you, Robin. We've had to make quite a few changes, actually positive changes, to the museums following the government announcements of the nineteenth of July, whereby most of the social distancing rules were relaxed, specifically those that affected the museum service. And so where we are at the moment is because of the Gateway to Medeville, England project ongoing, with the construction works, we are still using our E8 temporary exit entrance, which is the door just round to the right-hand side as you come up over the bridge, and that will be the case for the foreseeable future, as I say, whilst the Gateway to Medeville project is continuing, at least until May time next year. One small change that we've made actually since this report was written is that we used to have a one-way system going around the museum system. We were able to relax that as part of those announcements from the nineteenth of July, which means that visitors have a much more free flow around the Norwich Castle, which we think is really adds to the visit experience, in that people then can go back on themselves if they need to. And with the complicated building that Norwich is, housed in the Northern Victorian Prison, that's really important. And since we were originally as part of that one-way system, using E6 as the exit, so effectively you had one door in in E8 and a separate door out in E6, and again, that was quite complicated for visitors at times to get their heads around. So what we've done is, because of some other works that we're going to be doing, we've now reverted to using E8 as both the entrance and the exit, which is particularly helpful because people tend to remember the door in which they've come in and tend to naturally find that that should be the door that they would leave. So that sounds of yesterday, which is a slight change from this report. But otherwise, as you can see, I've just added there a couple of samples of the new signage. Robin has already articulated many of those changes in terms of, we're asking visitors now to respectfully distance as opposed to needing them to distance, and we think that's really important, that people feel safe within our buildings. We are still asking that people wear face coverings, of course, it's not enforceable, it's not a legal requirement, but we do ask people to wear them wherever possible, asking them these days. And we are still asking people to use the test and trace system, which again, the uptake of which has slowed in recent months, but it's still there, and we encourage people to use the test and trace wherever possible. Two other significant advancements since the last time that we met, and following on from the nineteenth of July, is our capacity to reintegrate catering units at Norwich Castle. There's a photo within the report there of the little catering unit that's been installed. It's actually a unit that we intended always to put in place whilst we lost our original cafe as part of the construction works with Gateway to Medeville, England, but actually we couldn't use it because of health and safety concerns around COVID. So we're very pleased to say that we have now reintroduced a catering facility, along with a small cafe seating area, which has been very well received by the visitors. We've also managed to enhance our retail experience, again, because of the need in order for us to be able to clean effectively each day, retail items that were on sale, we've been able since the nineteenth of July to significantly enhance that offer. Again, there's a photo there where you can see the rotunda being used as a temporary retail pop-up. Looking at the other sites, we're still, the Museum of Norwich opened to the public on Saturday the twenty-second of May, which again, is a massive strike for us at Norwich to be able to open the branch museum once more. Currently, we're opening three days a week, on a Thursday, a Friday and a Saturday, and Strangers Hall also very recently opened its doors for the first time actually since before the original outbreak of the COVID-19 pandemic, on Sunday the twenty-second of August. Both the Strangers Hall Museum and Museum of Norwich, we will look to get back to regular opening hours at some point within September. And so at the moment, as I say, Strangers Hall is only open on Sundays, but we're looking to reopen on Wednesdays and Sundays at a point in September of this year. And Museum of Norwich will move from Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays opening to Tuesdays to Saturdays opening, back in line to the opening prior to the pandemic. And the last bit from me is just to talk a little bit about wedding ceremonies. We're still extremely busy, in fact, we're getting busier all the time with wedding ceremonies, working with our NCC registrar colleagues. This is in part because of the busy summer period, when of course everybody wants to get married, but also we're still working through a significant backlog of weddings that were displaced as a consequence of the COVID-19 pandemic, and some of those actually go back almost twelve months. And so we've been having as many as six ceremonies a day over the summer period, and will continue to do so probably through until the end of September. The bookings are looking extremely strong, so, but that's all from me, thank you.
Chairman, happy point, and I'll point if there's any questions on this.
Chair, thank you very much, Robin. Yes, a question brought to me, can I throw on? Thank you, Chair, and thank you for what has been, what has been a good report. I have something sort of negative to say about it, particularly around the weddings. So the Same Sex Marriages Act has been enforced since 2014, and one of the things that can often be off-putting for same-sex couples is heteronormal language. So in your report here, you talk about bride entrance and groom entrance, I wonder if perhaps we can look at changing that to make it more reflective of, for those people who are, who don't, yeah, are following what may be considered to be a norm in old ways in thinking, but are exercising their rights under that new legislation.
Yes, absolutely. We're generally led by our registrar colleagues in that regard, but it's absolutely something that I will go back and speak to them about, something we can work on in using some more proportionate language, thank you. Thank you.
If they want to take further questions, I'll hand back to Robin for the next part of the report.
Thanks, Chair. It's a bit of a tag game for this afternoon, so I'm going to hand over to my colleague, Dr Helen Lemon, who's the Learning Manager for Norwich Museums, to introduce the third section of the report, looking at the activity of Helen's and Helen's team.
Thank you, Robin, and thank you everybody for your time today. It's a pleasure to be here in person. I'm sure we're all sharing that delight. The report was relatively lengthy on the learning programmes, which is a delight to reflect the wealth and breadth as well as the amount of work that the team has continued to do over the last few months. A live section of the report was intended to demonstrate in some detail benefits for strength of the partnership that we have with the National Gallery, which of course enables us to bring artworks internationally brought in to Norwich and enables us to facilitate engagement for a really wide range of audiences. And that programme, as you can see in the report, ranged from early children and adult caregivers through young people developing transferable workplace skills and local skilled children working with a local creative writer. All of those activities and more were inspired by and took enjoyment directly from a single large-scale oil painting created in the English century. So our ambitions are to find relevance, contemporary meaning, pleasure, enjoyment and learning from pieces of art and collections which might on the surface of it at least be quite traditional and limited in their reach. But hopefully you'll take time to read that, as I say, quite long section of the report to see the breadth and engagement without a single loan maybe was made possible at what was genuinely a learning difficult time in our way of working. We weren't able to facilitate activities in less than our audiences in ways that we have done traditionally relying on self-led activities to support other students on site and to continue, of course, to work remotely and digitally with our audiences with that partnership with National Gallery and to support boys to run a really rich engagement programme over the loan period gave a lot of motivating to my team and a lot of benefit to our audiences, both at the museum and online. As Robin mentioned, we were delighted to be able to get the schools' formal learning programme up and running again in early June. And as it says in the report, we were able to welcome nearly a thousand, we would have been lucky to hit a thousand, up very many a thousand children for facilitated learning activities from the beginning of June through to the end of summer term. It was really encouraging, not just the appetite from teachers and the resilience of our teachers to actually come back and visit us on-site, but the amazing resilience of the children, the level of engagement that we saw from the children, their focus, their commitment was absolutely incredible. And we cannot understand exactly what the driver for that was, but the opportunities for them to be in museums and having a single class of 30 as opposed to perhaps 120 or 150, who we often have at the castle in previous years, that gave you more focused attention to that small group of children. But we had wonderful, genuinely very warm feedback from our teachers and that was absolutely thrilling to get back up and running and to receive that feedback. Looking ahead, we're almost fully booked through to mid-November, so just the other side of the year, I hope, after. And all three of the museums, we have had two class limits, so we've been able to increase from a single class of 30 up to two classes being at our sites, maintaining the necessary COVID measures around respectful distancing, wearing face coverings for adults and children over 11, but also making sure that we're regularly sanitising objects and aspects of handling kept and etcetera. Staff training, of course, is also necessary. It's a long time since the team have been on-site doing what they love doing. So as I speak, staff training is ongoing, recently raising themselves with new sessions, but also making sure that we're refreshing them and reviewing them just to ensure that our programmes are still delivering curriculum-relevant sessions in ways which are in line with best educational practice. Basically a year has gone by, a year or more has gone by, and we need to make sure that we're still really delivering what it is that schools would like us to deliver for them. The blended schools offer continues as well. Our primary event, Life in a Castle, remains as a digital offer. That's a programme which is very much linked to the Castle Keep, of course, Life in Castle, that's the name. And we're not able to run that in a meaningful way on-site during the keep project. And so that remains as a digital offer with a live, live-streamed element to that activity as well. We've interestingly also recently received a small number of other digital bookings for our other digital events, which has demonstrated because there's an appetite and a requirement from some schools that they can engage with us in a digital way rather than us coming to site. We're also making the most of our digital resources by providing them to schools who are good for in-person events. So if you're coming for an ancient Egyptian event, we provide free and post-visit resources from that wealth of digital provision that we created during the pandemic. I'm also pleased to say that we, as of the end of last week, have started public guided tours of the castle again. We are taking baby steps in that direction. We are doing them for very small groups of people, adopting the rule of six, safe measure that was obviously in place for a lot of the COVID period. So we are doing very bespoke highlights tours, like a member of the learning team is leaving no more than six people around the site, making sure that we can maintain respectful distancing and still be people a really high-quality tour. They are highlights chosen essentially by the team, so we're not defining what the highlights are of the castle, but they are what mean something very special to the persons in the room as well, and it develops a real conversation and very personal insight into some of the objects and reflections. Since writing the report, I also just wanted to mention that we've worked recently with opening doors, through opening doors groups, to explore their interest in the castle's history and with present-day views. The service users of Open Doors, who if you don't know are adults who have specific or particular learning needs, had said they'd reached out to us saying that they wanted to hear about the castle's history and could be given an online talk. Rather than assuming what they'd be interested in and giving them the path history, we worked directly with them to tailor a talk that was based around their interests and questions. So essentially, we asked them what they wanted to know and then we did some very quick spot and note to make sure that we could meet and answer those questions. There was a regular participation throughout the three online sessions with more questions coming in, feedback directly to the deliverer if they were talking too fast or needed to explain something more. It was a really empathic and very positive experience for our staff as well as for participants. Follow-on activities at the Open Doors Day centres also continued their exploration of what a castle is and also what they would like it to be. We're keen to foster that partnership further and we would like to benefit from their input into our own work as we try and make our activities and events as inclusive as possible. Robin talked more about Kick the Dust in a few moments as a counterweight project, but in Norwich, just wanted to highlight that we have maintained and developed new project groups during the pandemic and over the summer, bringing young people together to shape and benefit from activities which provide individual benefits for them, including enhanced wellbeing to work regular skills. And they, of course, are two issues with considerable currency for young people at this time. Robust partnerships are at heart of Kick the Dust and in Norwich in particular, through the YMCA and Yacht Youth Eventing Team. During the height of the COVID pandemic last year, both organisations were very restrictive in how they could work with their young people and we weren't able, because of the restrictions, to continue either of those partnerships. But I'm glad to say that later on this month, onsite activities with young people from both of those organisations will be taken place and I'll look forward to telling you more about that on the next one. And finally, for today, before I take any questions and hand back to Robin, just wanted to extend an invitation to you all as councillors to come and attend and observe, take part if you're brave enough in any of our learning sessions, be that online or in person. As much as I can sit here and report to you on my team's work and celebrate their achievements, which I always take pride in doing, there's simply nothing better than trying to do it for yourself. So I'm sure that somebody in touch with me and or with my team will love to welcome you to one of our events as an opportunity to be in touch.
Kanser Wad, good question. Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much for the report. And aware of at least one school that is planning a visit with the bride and groom of the castle with going to see Dickie. And so I'm interested whether as part of when you're talking to schools, taking bookings, you can capture from them what else the school might be doing while they're in the city on their day. Because obviously in terms of co-child etcetera, for many schools coming in to specifically go to the castle, as wonderful as it is, it may not actually stack up financially, so they might be doing something else. It could be interesting for us as Norwich councillors to sort of understand what else they do in the city when they're here.
Do you mind if I ask, do you know whether they are self-led visits to our team?
I don't know.
No, okay. So our facilitated events essentially take the whole school day. So they arrive at a 10 o'clock start and they have left by a quarter past two, half past two, because that fits in with co-child. So for the facilitated events where they're coming specifically for a programme which has got the four active sessions all developed around curriculum-linked tactics the whole day, so I don't think it likely on those sorts of events that are actually coming into the city for other reasons. But it's not information we capture unless it's anecdotal, some people just do share things. And we have certainly had lots of inquiries from teachers saying, we're coming to Dickie, what can we do at the Castle Museum? And our pre-questry events fit with that quite nicely, non-thermatic situations fit with that quite nicely. So we're giving them clues and the example that you give is most probably a self-led visit where the school is coming.
I can certainly find that because I'm married to a head teacher. Just I'm interested because it'd be great, there is a symbiotic relationship between Dickie happening and training schools in.
Absolutely. And very pleased that, just yesterday I had an email reaching out from the new Head of Learning at Norwich Cathedral and they reached that we are going to do a new Head of Schools learning programmes and I'll be making sure that we're making a really good partnership and relationship with them on all sorts of levels to very modern sites which lots of them do. Be very interested to hear how they're going to take.
Thank you very much for that. I think I can step forward and call to your standard.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for all the wonderful resources they've got online because I didn't realise how much until this fall apart. I had a good look at the fortress for torches and I've got it here, it's really, really brilliant. And I guess the one the Crowe group of all is FNM, so that's the Friends of Norwich Museum. Absolutely brilliant. So thank you so much. What I do is really, really great. But I have got a couple of questions. So page 12, when you did, when you gave those, well, those boxers were created, 180 of those were taken and used by families with young children visiting the museum, 20 were given to NCC Children's Services, start to distribute to specific families. Just want to get any feedback on that, whether they, you know, whether they said that, you know, actually used them or enjoyed them.
We haven't had that feedback yet. It's something that we want to follow through. It was quite late in the day when the exhibition, when those boxes were taken up because of precious children's diseases etcetera. So no, I'm afraid it isn't something that we've had direct feedback from that, that they could see the benefit for some of their families. We just haven't seen that reflected back to us.
And so one more, the whole the afternoon fun, we did that at Community Centre as well. It's absolutely romantic. I just wondered how that went. Was that received really well by the children?
Yeah, absolutely.
Did you enjoy it?
Yes, we generally take huge amounts of pressure and obviously did. So yeah, I think that that level of engagement would be something that people have been crying out for and we're very conscious of the human experience for facilities like that and can also say yes.
Thank you for that. Kanser Ward.
Thank you. Thank you for your very interesting program. One thing I was going to ask, I know in the past we've got a tie-up with Nice City Football Club and their youngsters and some projects with them on Mass, I think we're at, I wonder if you've got any contacts there with your sort of.
No, that's a million, perhaps predates my time in the office, so to speak. No, it's a really interesting idea and yeah, I would definitely look into that. I think I could work really well with it when they're using, absolutely, and Mass is particularly, I think we do run a history in Mass in mind, I then got some in the castle, but I'm thinking of that. I know it's not going to be bad, but maybe.
Thank you.
Just like to say, I was involved with the first Kick the Dust and it was absolutely fantastic because I got to talk to the people who would never have thrown to think they could get such a good education by doing this. We're making clothes that were worn in the 1950s and I could tell them what they were like because I was in the 1950s. And they were so enamoured with what they were doing. It was dedicated and when you went to talk to them, you could see that an adult had come and that made all the difference. If there's anything like that, you know, I'd highly recommend that people get involved.
Thank you. I'll hand back to Robin for the next part of the report.
So I'm going to introduce section four, which relates to the Kick the Dust project that Helen mentioned. And for those members new to the committee, Kick the Dust is a major youth engagement programme that the service has been running since October 2018. And it's funded currently through the National Lottery Heritage Fund and it's one of 12 projects running across the UK. And to deliver this project, we're working in partnership with lots of organisations, particularly YMCA Norfolk. And the target audience for Kick the Dust is young people aged 11 to 25, but with a particular focus on those aged 16 to 25. And again, primarily focusing on young people who don't traditionally engage with museums or heritage and who might be characterised as hard to reach. And members who've been on the committee for a while will know that before COVID, we'd been doing a lot of really good work with young people across the community and here in Norwich. But actually, since lockdown, compared to some Kick the Dust projects nationally, which really struggled, I think it's fair to say that the Kick the Dust Norfolk Programme has really come into its own. And what we've provided for you in section four is some of the sort of headline statistics that we're capturing. And we've been sort of doing a lot of data crunching since the project started. Evaluation is a really important part of this project. But you've got some quite telling figures there, including in the second paragraph, the summary of participation since the first national lockdown started up until the middle of August this year, where we've seen in that period, very interactions with young people, clearly primarily digital, we've had nearly 4,000 interventions with young people involving over 1,500 individual young people and they've taken part in over 1,700 hours of activity. And that means since the project started back in October 2018, we've seen best part of 10,000 interventions, working with over 3,000 individual young people who've worked in nearly, who've participated in nearly 5,000 hours of activity. And we've also seen in that period, 237 volunteering opportunities being provided to over 100 young people. So I share those statistics with you at previous meetings at this committee and I think gives you a flavour of how successful this project has been, particularly how effective it's been engaging with young people at a really challenging time and then during the pandemic. And our interactions have not just been digital, mindful that a lot of young people in digital poverty, we've also supported a range of face-to-face activities where that's possible to do. And we've also supported resources being sent out to young people in digital poverty. And we've also supported resources being sent out to young people in digital poverty, working in partnership with a broad range of organisations to do that. We've also included some other statistics about the levels at which people are participating in this project. And Chair, perhaps the next meeting of the committee, I'll ask the project coordinator, Christine Marsden, to come along and do a much better job than me at selling the successes of this project. But I thought I would highlight one of the statistics, which is around the fact that 68% of our project activities involve young people in either leading or designing those activities. So we're not just delivering these things to young people. We are actually actively involving them now in designing the projects that they're in participating in. And that's part of a sort of journey that a lot of young people have been on through this project, where we've gone from initial interactions, where they've come along and joined an activity, to a position now where they're actively involved in shaping that project and in some places helping to manage it. So we currently have three young people on our steering group. One of the recent projects referenced there is Digital Buddies, which is a good example of the way in which this project has been reaching into all corners of North Norfolk Museum service. This project is not just about us working with young people. It's also about equipping the organisation to welcome and work with young people in the long term. And there's been a big programme of institutional change around providing training and support for staff across MNS to increase their confidence and skills around working with young people. And one of the good examples of that is Digital Buddies project, which pairs up young people with some of our curators to help them develop their digital programmes, particularly social media, and make them more relevant for young people. So that's increased the skills of our staff, but has also increased the effectiveness of how they're engaging with young people. We're also during Covid developing our partnership working with organisations within and beyond the county council. So the Kick the Dust Project team now play an active part in a new group called Making Creative Futures, which brings together county council departments and other organisations who are actively involved in supporting young people and families, particularly during Covid. This group, amongst other things, has developed packs of resources which have been sent out to literally thousands of households over the period of the pandemic, including art and craft and heritage materials developed by Kick the Dust young people. That group is also going to enable Kick the Dust to support programmes like DFE, Poly Activities, Food Project, which is providing not only food resources, but also activities to families in receipt of preschool meals. So we're hoping that this, some of these new partnerships that have been developed during the pandemic will actually prove to be sustainable partnerships that can enable Kick the Dust to develop its reach in the future. And just to give you a couple of very quick updates on individuals. So I'm very pleased to report that one of our Kick the Dust first new trainees has just secured a job. Amber has been based with our Design and Technical Department at Norwich Castle and has just secured a job working with a design company. And one of our other Kick the Dust trainees has just secured a place on the very competitive Teaching Museum Programme, which is our paid internship programme. What you've got in section 4.1 of the report is a bit of breakdown in terms of the participants in the Kick the Dust project. And it demonstrates that the majority of our interactions are with young people aged 60 and above. And that in the target audiences section, you can get a sense of the range of sort of challenges young people are facing that we are working with. And around 36% of the young people we work with have been or are currently WCA clients here in Norfolk. I mentioned that this project has been really tightly evaluated. There's a lot of work going on around measuring the impact of this project. And some of that's reflected in the sort of headline statistics I've given you. What's also highlighted in section 4.3 is how the participation and performance in Norfolk compares with the national monitoring of Kick the Dust projects. A company called Renee C are actually responsible for looking across the 12 projects to measure their impact. And what you can see there is the way in which our project stacks up against other projects running nationally. And I'm pleased to say that on the whole, we're actually running ahead of other projects, although it's not a competition clearly, but very nice to see. And we're expecting the updated Renee C survey results from 2021 to be released in time now. I think they're being presented to Kick the Dust groups and young people, including Norfolk Kick the Dust participants this afternoon. And at our next meeting, we should be able to share those comparison statistics again with you to give you a sense of how the Norfolk Kick the Dust project benchmarks against other projects happening across the UK. I think it's fair to say that some of the Kick the Dust projects have struggled with Covid because of their focus on direct delivery. We've been fortunate, we've been able to adapt a lot of what we do to a more digital environment whilst retaining face-to-face elements where that is possible. So I'll pause there, Chair, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Robin. I'd just like to note the disparity in figures between what's happening locally and what Renee C are recording. We've been positive, seeing how positively it's been as pointed to here. So thank you for that. Are there any questions on this part of the report?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just going back to the, this on page 16 of the report, where you're working with parents to develop creativity and communication spirit with children. What sort of response you've had to that particular initiative and what sort of activities you've actually arranged with the parents? Page 16, the second paragraph. So this is, so the whole day is including acts of, that's the random creation source. So it's very requiring things, just by activities that are work on. Beyond that, I need to.
Okay, if there were no further questions, I'll hand over to Robin for the next part of the report.
Thank you, Chair. And as I say, we'll invite Christine Marsden, the project coordinator, who is on the on that Creative Futures agreement, to attend the next meeting. But we will certainly do an update on that particular query. Section five of the report relates to the Norwich Castle project. I'm mindful that we've only been able to give members a brief snapshot of relating to activity on the castle project. And obviously, you'll be aware of the tarot range, a very visible feature of Norwich at the moment. In discussions with the Chair, what we would like to do is at the next meeting, give members a more sort of visual presentation, taking you behind the scenes and giving you a sense of project activity. And we will look to also organise, when we can do so, a tour for members, a sort of hard-hack tour, which I'm sure members would enjoy. It's something we would have obviously looked at done before now, but with all the Covid and other restrictions, that's been very difficult. But certainly after Christmas, we're looking at trying to facilitate that. And I've asked the team to prioritise this committee as an early group to have the chance to see works for themselves. But we will give a more detailed visual report at our next meeting. And I'll invite the project manager, Harry Jackson, to come along and deliver that to you. But just to give you a sort of very quick overview of where we are with the project. And there's a nice shot included in the report taken from a drone earlier in the summer. As you'll be aware, we handed over the site to the principal contractor, Morgan Sinor, last summer. And since that time, we've installed all of the hoarding lines that I'm sure visitors to the city of Norwich are very familiar with, both up on the mound but also in the lower castle gardens. And we've tried to make those hoardings as user-friendly as possible. So if you walk past the hoardings in the lower castle gardens, you'll see, for example, the specially commissioned cartoon figures that decorate the hoardings, which all have relevance to Norwich Castle collections. And both externally and internally, where we've got hoardings, we're providing information about the project to visitors. Obviously, as well messaging that the rest of the museum does remain open and trying to ensure that visitors have a straightforward journey as they negotiate the hoardings and enable them to access the site of the castle itself. We managed to keep construction work going during Covid, but clearly, you know, that has had an impact on the sort of pace of activity. But we have been able to undertake quite significant work on the site. Most of the new drainage connections are now in across the keep and rotunda areas. And members will be aware from the previous report that we'd actually lifted and reinstated the timber floor, 1960s dance floor, actually, in the rotunda. And that facilitated the rotunda then being available for the pop-up cafe and shop Stuart was describing earlier in the port. And a lot of the work so far in the project has been the sort of slightly unglamorous bit of doing drainage connections and piling and creating footings. There's also been a lot of work around ongoing survey investigation. And as you would expect, very close days on with the city council, local spatial officers and colleagues from historic England. And every stage in Kedmore is a very sensitive project, is a very sensitive historical building. It's been very carefully managed. But we are at the stage where we're beginning to come out of the ground. We've made interesting discoveries during the project, including objects and architectural features, some of which have been interesting, some of which have created challenges for us. But all of those are being very carefully recorded and any impact on them is being very carefully mitigated. And it's a project that's constantly being redesigned as we go to ensure that any interactions with the historic fabric are as safe as possible. At the moment, in the keep, we're doing a lot of work to create the points at which the new steel floor structures would interface with the historic wall fabric. We have literally dozens of what I know has been there in points, which is where the steel beams actually rest within the wall. And each of those has to be very carefully surveyed and created to mitigate the impact on the historic fabric. We're also undertaking piling work in the museum entrance and in the keep. And I'm pleased to report, we have actually seen things now appearing. The new WC block, which is on the site of the former cafe, members are familiar with the site. All of the seals for that were installed in the last two weeks. So it's really pleasing to see stuff appearing as opposed to just being demolished. So we're continuing to sort of progress well with the project. And at this stage, we're looking for construction work to be included in early 2023 for the keep and other areas back online sooner than that. So the new entrance and shop areas and new cafe areas in 2022. At the moment, we're still working through discoveries and mitigating the impact of those on the programme. And hopefully, our next meeting will have a bit more certainty around things to report to this committee. But it's a complex project. I've included within the report some pictures showing the concrete foundations in the new WC block area. And it was great to be on site last week and to see the seals of maybe built on top of those concrete foundations. So just pause there, Chair, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Robin. Are there any questions on this part of the report?
I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed the Chrome exhibition. As a councillor for Chrome, obviously, I would have to say that. And wondered what sort of findings you've had in the excavations. Is there anything exciting that you can share with us, please?
Well, I was talking with the Chair before the meeting and we've had archaeologists on site throughout the project, as you would expect. And they continue to peer down every hole that appears. And we are reporting findings on a regular basis. You may have seen recent coverage in the EDP about some of the archaeological finds. I think what's for me the most interesting is the fact we are still revealing fairly significant architectural features within a building that we assumed we knew very well. And I think it just highlights the fact that it's a very complicated building. A real area of focus for us recently has been the entrance area, where you went up to the museum into the reception where the mosaic floor was. That area has all been lifted, the mosaic has been very carefully lifted. All of the crests have been reinstated after the project, the main construction work has been finished. But in that area, we discovered a number of features that relate to either the Georgian or Victorian prison era, including a new section of stairs that were below ground, which again, were not a feature that we understood previously. And that's despite exhaustive pre-construction surveys and investigations, including round penetrating radar. And it just highlights to me the fact that this is a very complex building and it keeps throwing up surprises. We've also been very alert to understanding more about the history of the castle. So some of the excavation work within the area showing those photographs, the old cafe area, has revealed some quite interesting information about the footings for the original castle wall. And we've also got some tantalising evidence for possibly defensive structures that predate the first castle on the mound. So it's really interesting material coming through. And obviously, the archaeologists are working for all of that. And at some point, Chair, we'd be delighted to give members a sort of summary of some of the discoveries and also perhaps a chance to have a look at some of them for themselves. But it's a site that keeps on giving. And despite, and it's amazing, despite the exhausted surveys, investigations that we've undertaken in advance of the project, as you would expect, it's a site that still keeps throwing up the odd surprise. So we're rolling with the punches and it's what you would expect, frankly, with a complex historic building that's had generations and generations of use. And we are telling the stories to very widely. We're obviously featuring discoveries on social media, but we also have regular items in the EDP and Archie we use through a partner we have with Archie. So we know members of the public are very interested in discoveries. And we're doing what we can to sort of use those to raise awareness of the project.
Thank you, Robin. We certainly welcome any further updates, finds, mistakes, or otherwise. If there were no other questions, then I'll hand it back to Robin for the next part of the report.
Thank you, Chair. And I have to give apologies from Dr Francesca Banker, who's our senior curator, who would normally be presenting this section of the report. Francesca's on-site for the meeting with some artists that we're working with around a future exhibition. In terms of other site activity, as Stuart mentioned, it's been fantastic to be able to reopen both the museum in Norwich and Strangers Hall. And the museum in Norwich continues to show the Chrome's Norwich exhibition, which was established as a complement to the wonderful Chrome exhibition, which recently closed at Norwich Castle. And the Chrome exhibition at the Museum of Norwich sort of is a different take on Chrome through the eyes of contemporary photographer Nick Stone. Strangers Hall, section 6.2, again, a real. Strangers Hall, section 6.2, again, a real pleasure to be in Strangers Hall. A real challenge for Stuart and his team in terms of a building that whilst, I guess, designed at a time of plague, was less suited to delivering sort of Covid cure procedures. So it was really only when some of the Covid restrictions relaxed that we were able to move on to Strangers Hall. And at the moment, we're just limited to one day a week, but as Stuart mentioned, we're looking to build on that. And as always, the team at Strangers have been very ambitious in trying to deliver a range of activities, including activities using the wonderful garden space. And we featured important information about some of the events that have taken place, including the artist workshop. In section seven, again, Francesca has provided a set of activities by the specialist curators. Tim Pastel, who is senior curator of archaeology, has been a key lead for the keep project in terms of not only coordinating work with the archaeologists, but also he's the lead expert in terms of many construction works that have a relationship with the historic fabrics. So Tim is on site on a very regular basis, working closely with the design team and the contractors. As also noted in the report, Tim's recently been appointed as a member of the Arts Council of England's reviewing committee for the export of works far, which again reflects, you know, how Tim is viewed within the profession as an expert on medieval archaeology. Also highlighted is the work of Dr Georgia Botenelli, who was the curator for the Chrome exhibition, which has just closed at the castle. Fantastic exhibition that was put together in a very challenging circumstance with a lot of uncertainty about whether loans that had been expected would be possible because of all the Covid challenges, including national, international loans. So enormous credit to Georgia for creating a fantastic exhibition, a super catalogue. And lots of digital resources that there's already been mentioned available for members to explore at their leisure. A super exhibition and one that really celebrated the reopening of Norwich Castle. And then Rosie Gray, our curator of Monica temporary art, was also directly involved with the supporting these art funds over the Orange Show, which was running alongside Chrome in the Timothy Geary Gallery. And the next exhibition in the main tea gallery space next year will be an exhibition that Rosie's organising, linked to the Arts Council of England's touring collection. And we previously mentioned the connection with Dippie. And David Waterhouse, our senior curator of natural history, has been closely involved in working with colleagues at the cathedral. And that included creating a complimentary display of collections at the cathedral, which we supported. And David also runs some events at the cathedral and also for the Royal Museum Service. And as you would expect, shows have been very, very popular. So we work very closely with the cathedral and David, as always, has been a very good example of how our curators always look to support partnerships across the county. Francesca herself, who I said has given her apologies this afternoon, has been working on the next stages of the exhibition tour for the Walton Bridge of Painting by Turner, that Francesca was very instrumental in acquisition. And as well as touring to venues outside of Norfolk, including most recently Colchester Castle, that painting will be going on tour to other museums within Museum Service, including the Lyd Museum next year. Francesca's been coordinating that programme, which is supported by the National Lottery Heritage Fund. I also included the rather funny image of the recent teapot acquisition that Francesca was working through. A very large collection of teapots has recently been acquired and discussing with this with the chair ahead of the meeting. We very much hope our next committee meeting will be on site at the castle. And we will endeavour to ensure that some of the highlights of those, a black collection, will be available for members to view. So absolutely fascinating collection that Francesca is literally working through at the moment. But we'll see if we can make some of those available for members to see at our next meeting. Ruth Fassbrough took our senior curator costume textile. It's busy working on planning the next exhibition in Timothy Geary Gallery at the end of October. So this will be the textile treasure exhibition, which some members of the committee may recall, was originally scheduled for the main tea gallery, temporary exhibition galleries that had to be postponed because of lockdowns in December. That exhibition has been redesigned for the Timothy Geary Gallery. So the energy that went into creating that exhibition wasn't lost. In addition to all the digital content that was created, there will be a version of the exhibition on show at the Timothy Geary Gallery from the 22nd of October. And in turn, the curatorial update, Kate Thaxton curated regimental collections to complete the set. Kate's been involved in a major programme to restore regimental collections in the Shire Hall. That's been a very complicated project and real credit to Kate and the team for continuing to deliver that project, even during the restrictions imposed on her as a result of the pandemic. So just pulling in that section, Chair, while I'm over Stuart, so his chief speakers.
Thank you very much, Robin. Are there any questions or comments here? Councillor Ward first.
Yes, thank you for that, Robin. Very interesting. Just want to inquire, what is going to go into the tea gallery now it's empty?
Thank you. So following the removal of the Chrome exhibition, the tea gallery is going to be focused for a major construction project to replace all of the air handling kits. Members may be aware that those galleries are very, they're absolutely critical to us in terms of our major exhibition programmes, which often feature loans from national and international museums. And the Chrome exhibition is a good example of that. Not only in terms of doing the best by our own collections, but certainly where we're bringing in loans of national and international material, we're required to meet very stringent environmental standards in terms of temperature and relative humidity. And that, those galleries have been yipping along, I think would be a good description in terms of the current air handling plant that is managing the environment within those spaces. So we did secure some county council capital funding to enable us to basically replace the air handling units that cover that gallery. And that work we hopefully is penancing next week. And that should then mean that those galleries will be able to provide stringent environmental controls in the long term and also do that more efficiently. So we have been able to maintain standards, but it's been very difficult with the current kit. And that project, called Project Fresh, will enable us to continue to receive high value loans from both national and international members.
If there were no other questions, I'll hand it back to Robin to hand over to Mr.
Thank you, Chair. Also, to Stuart to introduce the visitors.
Thank you, Robin. And just to touch on the last on Project Refresh, I'll be project managing Project Refresh. And I'll include an update report at our next meeting. Looking at visitor numbers, it's worth noting that the visitor numbers here, which I've displayed for Norwich Castle and Museum of Norwich, date from the 17th of May, when we obviously originally opened following pandemic, through to the 22nd of August at the time of writing the report. I can say that for August, because it was up to the 22nd of August, we've actually had in excess of 10,000 visits for August, which has been pretty fantastic, given the restrictions that have been placed upon museums. It's worth noting there that up until the 17th of July, when of course we were able to relax some of our restrictions, we were actually operating at Norwich Castle on a maximum of 126 people at any one time. That was a consequence of, and we're now thankfully from the 17th of July, back to 420 persons permitted within the building at any one time. And of that 126, that included staff. It basically meant that we couldn't allow more than 100 visitors in the museum at any one time, which had a dramatic impact on visitor numbers. That is determined by Covid restrictions. There were two ways of working out permitted numbers. One was allowing 15 square metres of space per visitor or 30% of your permitted fire numbers that are allowed in the building. And so there was 126 from the 420 we're currently permitted. And of course, that is a reflection of the gateway to maybe even England project, whereby we lost two of our major fire exits, our two, in fact, our two only double door fire exits, with the exception of the entrance that we're currently using, which is why we had a dramatic reduction in, no reduction in the numbers that we could allow in the building at any one time. So considering those restrictions, actually the numbers from May through to July were very, very strong. And actually during July, we were operating most days at 100% capacity, with all of the bookings being made, pre-booked tickets only. We needed to do pre-booked tickets so that we could manage that expectation of how many people we could have in the building at any one time. And again, since the 17th of July, we still encourage everybody to pre-book, of course. However, people can come in off the streets as well. And so we've seen a significant rise in football and also in, as obviously the numbers that are coming through as a consequence of that increase. So that's all. Thank you.
Chair, just to add to that, included in the agenda pack from page 39 is a summary of our social media engagement in the period February to July 2021. So that's just to give members a sense of the range of our digital interactions over a similar period to the report duration. And this social media report is something that we included with previous minutes from this committee.
Thank you very much. It's certainly worth noticing the popularity of Museum Service online, that social media work has been going with excellence. Are there any questions or comments members might have for that last part of the report? Okay, well, thank you very much, Robin and Stuart, for updating us today. We now turn to reports from representatives of the voluntary organisations. I'd like to invite Felicity out first, if you have any comments you want to make on the friends of the social media.
Thank you, Chair. Well, we've been quite disappointed not being to fill all our ranges this year. But we're very pleased about this, the reception, in fact. So that would be a very nice end to the, to our final.
All right, Felicity, do you mind putting your microphone there? To members in here, just to.
Just to say that, yeah, we were sorry that we weren't able to fulfil our plans for our centenary. But there were some highlights, including the lighting of the keep, which was a huge success, I thought, and the photography was very, very beautiful. And to say also that we're looking forward to the civic reception, that you're very kindly laying on for us. And we're looking forward to that very much. And then of course, looking forward to next year, we're going to have a few more things, including a luncheon with our patron, and that's going to be rather superb. So, but yeah, that's all I do. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Felicity. If I could invite Sandra Delicia, who's new person to form the Northern Contemporary Art Society.
Thank you very much, Chair. And I can't say how glad I am to actually be here with you all and listen to all this. I'm a recent incomer into Norwich and I'm thrilled with the cultural diversity, artistic diversity and everything. So it's really good to be here. I'm not going to keep you very long. I just wanted to highlight a couple of areas where the Norfolk Contemporary Art Society is feeding into the rich cultural and artistic heritage that's here already. We continue to nurture our strong links with the castle and have recently agreed to cut funding to the exciting projects, I think which was alluded to already. I don't think I'm allowed to say what the projects are, but they'll be in 2022 and they'll be quite significant in terms of their importance in that sense. Also, I don't know if you know, but one of the Norwich, Norfolk Contemporary Art Society's key objectives, as well as supporting established artists, we have a very close association with NUA, the Norwich University of the Arts. And we reach out to as many newer students at undergraduate, graduate and postgraduate level to help nurture and promote their careers as artists. We recognise how important the youth is of feeding the youth into the cultural wellbeing of the country. And to this end, ENCAAS has funded the NUA Fine Art Prize for arts graduates for several years now. This year being no exception, even though we had to do it, we could actually see the objects or anything, we had to actually do it online, which is really hard. The prizes for art and for the first time sculpture will be announced tomorrow, which is really exciting, at one of the graduation ceremonies. And we also encourage arts students to come and talk to us and be with us. They also have free access to our membership. So we're sort of trying to promote that younger generation to come and join us in that sense. And just looking forward, we're organising our major open selling exhibition. That's the Norfolk Contemporary Arts 21. That's going to run in the Host Street, so Dippie, look out, from the 8th November to the 5th of December. And we've also restarted our talks programme. We have brilliant talks programme, very reasonable prices. And we have a first talk scheduled for the 27th January by Dr Juliana Borca on Peruvian indigenous art. We cover all areas, which is really exciting. So that's all I wanted to point out, that, you know, we're here to help you do what you do. And I really appreciate all the work you do.
Thank you very much, Felicity, for that. Thank you certainly to everyone else for going to that final class.
Apologies, Chair. Just remember, sorry, Chair, just remembered I was supposed to pass on the apologies from Amanda Gaitan, the St. Peter Arts Fund.
Thank you, Julie, as well. Okay, well, thank you very much, everybody, for being here. So, Esther Kybert.
More comment. I found it particularly interesting to be here for the presentation from Norwich Friends as a fond member of the Setford Friends 33 years ago. So we will never catch you guys up, but please pass my thanks on to those who gave the presentation.
Thank you very much, certainly. We'll do so. And yes, the Friends are certainly an inspirational group. Well, thank you very much, everybody, for being present for this afternoon's meeting. That concludes our business. So, thank you.